I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, April 8, 2019, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in the table file.
Yes, in the table file you'll see a number of additional personnel items, including one addition to the list of staff being non-rede for the 2019-20 school year. You also had updated materials for this evening's discussion on our gymnastics solutions for coming years, and also on updated materials for our technology services presentation.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much. If there are no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board?
I do.
Okay, so seeing someone come forward, I will read the, some of the guidelines regarding speaking public comment. So, I'd like to remind the public that this is a listening opportunity for the board and not a time to debate an issue. Also, the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act prohibits comment about specific student matters even without naming the student in open session. This includes the public comment portion of our meeting. The board respects and values input on student matters, but when it relates to a specific student or to a specific student matter, such input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, such as the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. So with that being said, you can step to the podium, identify yourself by stating your name and address, and if you represent a group. We ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes, and just a reminder that you must be a resident of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. So, welcome.
Hi, my name is Zoe Ingersoll. I live on 224 First Street North, Nurseville, Minnesota, and I open enrollment into the Northfield School District, and I'm a part of the gymnastics team. I want to speak with you guys about the Farmington gymnastics option for next season. Practicing in Farmington would add an extra 30 minutes onto the already 30-minute drive for those of us who live out of town in Northfield. It would total up to two hours in the car every day when homework could be getting done or gymnasts could be sleeping. Not only will the effects of their academic performance likely decline, but as will their mental and physical health as they potentially lose sleep or traveling during mealtimes and gain more stress. That adds up to 75 hours for the full season. Practicing out of town would result in the Raiders yet again having no real home meets. This year, we didn't have any as the Kmart facility wasn't equipped, and we never had a place where we felt comfortable and confident, and we rarely got any fans besides our family. The size of the Farmington Gymnastics Club is significantly smaller than what we were used to on our own, and we would have to share it with the recreation and competitive classes as well. The Northfield Gymnastics Club had issues with scheduling us in their gym, which was almost two times bigger and usable space for the high school team. The Farmington space is also without a pit of some sort. This year, we had to create our own, but it worked very well in order to save our ankles from repetitive use and many injuries. This year, we lost our home of NGC and moved to Kmart. In the middle, we were also thinking of going to Farmington, so we lost two homes. Because of that, we felt homeless. Then, when we finally got to Kmart, we made it our own, and we felt like we finally had a home. Now, we possibly won't even be able to practice in our own town that we call home. The extra 75 hours for the season is too much for some girls, and several will have to quit if we leave town. We would not only be losing two homes in a year, but we would lose what makes those places our homes, each other. The history of gymnastics has always been strong in the community. It still is. We're in charge of keeping the team strong and successful, and that won't happen if no gymnast are joining the team. Gymnastics has a history in Northfield. It would be sad if this is the beginning of the end of that history and legacy. I have some packets here with more information that I couldn't fit into my three minutes I got, if I could hand those out to you guys now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Anyone from the audience would like them? I have extras.
Okay, thank you, Zoe.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
I do. Hi.
Hello.
My name is Ashley Ringling. I live at 1001 Prairie Circle here in Northfield, and I am here to speak on the gymnastics topic as well, just to request that you consider some things when you're having your further discussion later on this evening. I'd like to make sure that you're considering all the Title IX guidelines that are set out there, and that we're following those Title IX guidelines, and considering how gymnastics is being taken care of in that area. I'd be interested to know how many construction bids were received on how we're going to outfit that Kmart spot, if it is an option. Is it one, is it two, is it a regulated three minimum? As Zoe commented, the academic impact to our students, that travel time would be essential in impacting the students that are wanting to be at home studying and being ready and prepared for the following day. And to make sure that we're making a long-term decision and not just a GAAP decision. This year, we had that emergency situation. You were very generous in how you provided equipment for the team, and the facility worked out. Just making sure that we're making a more long-term, stable decision instead of a GAAP decision again this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to address the board? Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? I do not see anyone else coming forward unless there's someone trying to come in from, towards the back of the room. Okay, so with the end of public comment, we will now move forward. Thank you. Dr. Hillman, announcements and recognitions.
Yes, I just have one announcement this evening, and it's congratulating our Northfield Raider speech team for finishing runner-up at section, and then our six students who are moving on to state competition. Grace Hillman, Jeanette Pelletier, Leah Park, Celia Maher, Ava O'Hara-Brotner, and Logan Ledman. And congratulations to Grace Hillman and to Logan Ledman, who are section champions in their respective divisions. They'll all participate this Saturday in the state meet at YZ High School. So, congratulations to Coach Saxton West and the rest of the team, and obviously, I have someone in my house who I'm quite proud of as well.
Absolutely, and as well you should be. Okay, excellent. Is there anything any board members would like to add? No?
I'd like to bring the attention that some time ago, several months ago, several months ago, Northfield is recognized by the University of Minnesota's Humphrey School for Public Affairs to acknowledging the insurance program that we have, a self-funded insurance program. And now, that information has been distributed, and it's in the journal that goes to all of the school districts in the state. So, Northfield's work in saving money, providing insurance, and a self-funded program is now available, the information is available statewide also. And Dr. Hillman, can you add a couple more details on that?
Yeah, I bet you I can, and I think that Director of Finance, Nurse Dorff, will also help me. I think one of the things when we talk about this issue, we need to really compliment Director of Human Resources Molly Beeselman, Northfield Education Association Representative Ray Cudry, and the people who really started the Benefits Advisory Committee that we have more than 15 years ago. Getting to self-funded health insurance was a long process. We endured some swings in our premium increases, just like most of the people in the public have over a period of time. And when we went to self-funded health insurance, we have seen a complete parity in our premium increase, or lack thereof actually, over the last six years. We've had six consecutive years where we have not had to increase the premium for insurance for our employees. A long time ago, we made sure that every single employee in the district gets the same insurance contribution from the school board, and we think that that's an important parity component. And in addition, you know, we straddle, we look at, we look at the most important thing that we do as hire quality people to work with our students, whether that be educational assistants, child nutrition personnel, teachers, administrators, coaches. We want to make sure we have the best people that we possibly can. And we know that we straddle. We've got kind of one foot in the metro, you know, and kind of one foot in southeast Minnesota, and our salary schedule reflects that. So, someone can go to the north and probably make a little bit more money on the salary schedule, or they can, we pay a little bit more than those to our south and to our east. But one of the things that makes us so competitive for high-quality professionals is our insurance program, because there's been stability, because people pay less for the program that we have here for a better coverage. And then frankly, it has been a substantial, good financial investment for the school district. I'm just going to ask Val to give a high level overview. I know you've heard this all before, but we have some other people here tonight, and we're not, we're never shy to share this with the public, so.
Yep, well, I will be presenting the self-insurance budget at the next meeting, so we'll talk a little more in detail about it. But as Dr. Hillman said, we have not increased our health insurance premium for six years, and we actually, two years ago, decreased our premium, which is pretty unheard of in this day and age. And we've built a fund balance that was basically money we were providing to the co-op. It was money we were leaving on the table, and we've built the fund balance in that fund, and it can only be used to offset costs or increase the benefits that we're offering and that sort of thing. We've had actually a couple this past year and a half has been actually pretty challenging for some of our staff, and we've been able to weather that and still, within our current rates, and still have a really strong financial fund balance in that. So, it's been a really, a good win for both the district and our employees.
And what, do you remember the latest fund balance number?
Five million-ish.
So, that's $5 million of taxpayer money that we would have provided to other school districts in southeast Minnesota through the regional insurance cooperative. And by taking that step and bringing that back in, we've been able to stabilize our insurance costs over the years. So, we were honored to be recognized by a group prestigious as the Humphrey School for Public Affairs, and we were thrilled to see the article in the School Boards Association, though, you know, the reflection off my bald head in the picture probably, you know, disrupts the picture a little bit. But, no, thanks for bringing that up, Noel.
At the time, we talked about this, the insurance rates were going up like 15% to 18% a year. And so, the numbers that Val talked about are significant, and we appreciate the work.
Well, and I think having it in that publication hopefully will allow some districts to explore whether they would be able to do that as well, because often when Dr. Hillman and I are speaking with, you know, our C colleagues at meetings, you know, and we talk about the insurance, many of them were facing double-digit, and we kind of briefly talked about ours, but I think that they showcase it there. Will hopefully allow some other districts maybe to contact us and figure out how we did it, and let that be helpful for them as well.
Thanks, Noel.
Okay. Anything, anyone else would like to add? No? Okay. We'll go on for our first item for discussion, which is our technology services presentation. As a reminder, Kim Bruski, our Director of Technology, her PowerPoint copy was in the table file. Welcome, Kim.
Well, thank you. Good evening. And I think you saw the, the numbers in the lease documents are in the board packet for this evening as well.
Yes.
So, that's basically what we're going over tonight. I think we've gone through the information of feedback and such in the last couple of meetings and at the work session, and of course, I will entertain any questions on those as well. But as we get started, of course, we like to start with our mission of delivering educational excellence that empowers all learners to engage in our dynamic world. And wow, I just am reminded about how dynamic that world is and the ongoing changes that we, that we attempt to keep up with and to prepare our students to manage in the future. So, as we've talked about in the last couple of times that I've been with you, we're looking to put forth a recommendation for a renewal of our iPad leases. We have heard quite a bit of feedback from our parents and from our, from our licensed staff members, and some from students. I will talk more about that, if you have questions about that as well. And moving forward, the recommendation is a four-year lease of 4,200 iPads. Those would be iPad sixth generation with the Logitech Crayon. That's the, as you see pictured there with a case very much like that. So, a write-in utensil is a really big addition to this, this lease. It would be very similar to our previous leases, where we would be able to renew the lease at three years if we would choose to do that, and we would leverage then the existing value in the, in the products to put them towards paying off the lease. Otherwise, if we do go through the four payments, we own the devices and then can resell them. The cost of that lease is right around $403,000 per year. So, when you look at the history, over the past three years, we've had $422,000 allotted in our budget for the leases and the management of those iPads. That was called Casper previously, now it's called Champ. So, if you look at the, the history there, it's like, always go back and kind of remind us where we've been for each of the past fiscal years, starting in '16, which had the last year of our iPad twos, and that's where we began this. The current leases, which are three phases. Phase one was 910 iPad minis. Those mostly went to staff and then to the elementary schools. And phase two is the current iPad airs that our high school and middle school students use, and if staff opt for a full-size, they can have that as well. That was 2,650 devices. And phase three is 480 iPad mini twos that are in the elementary schools, and those are the ones that brought our, our fourth and fifth up to one-to-one, and our K3 up to one for every two students. So, those are the leases that we're wrapping up right now. So, if you see fiscal year '19, we've made those payments. Fiscal year '20, we have half of the payment for our second-phase lease and the final payment of that phase three. So, I've worked with Apple on can we sell those before we make that payment if we're still leasing them, and we do have an arrangement to be able to do that, to leverage the value in those devices. The funding for the devices, so our current approval, like we've had in the past few years, is $422,000. Like I said, that includes the lease and the management. So, what we're looking at with this, the management would run about $24,000 a year. On top of that $403,000 lease payment, it would be a total of $427,000, which is an increase of 1%. So, in that increase, I think we get some pretty good things, so we'll talk about that a little bit. But you can see the basic numbers here of the $403,000 for the lease. That would come out of the capital fund, and we have approved that money already, and the $24,000 of management, which is continued to come from the general, the general fund in the technology services budget, which is where it comes from currently. And that's exactly the same as we're doing at this point. So, still in the works, I know this was a question previously as well, what about our elementary teachers who have said, "Hey, we would like more access to devices"? We know we have some of those teachers, our specialists have asked, and some of our K2 teachers have asked. Some of our K2 teachers are very content where they're at with devices in their classroom, and that's a, that's a tricky thing to go, how do we, how do we manage getting the people what they need to teach if it's not exactly the same thing? We're, we're a lot better at exactly the same. So, when it gets to be some here, some there, it gets a little bit trickier, but I have a couple of options floated out with our elementary principals, and I put about 100 devices into this lease number to account for putting them where they might be needed to get some of that other elementary need up. So, working with those elementary principals. And then, we still need to address keyboarding with the middle and high school. And so, we know that there are some who prefer a keyboard, and we know that there are some who do not care about a keyboard. And so, I think that's the tricky part with some of the student feedback, too, is it's easy to say, "Would you like an iPad with a keyboard case?", or "Would you like a Chromebook", or "Would you like an iPad with a plug-in keyboard"? Would you like that keyboard at home to do homework, or would you like it in your classrooms to work while you're here? And there's some questions there, and I think there's some overlap, and it's hard to know, I think, which is the best unless you see those options. And that's what we found with the district youth council when we showed that keyboard case that was a bit clunky, and people went, "Well, I don't know if I'd want that." And the Chromebook is, is a preference for some, however, not to the extent that we thought we could, we could go and change the practices that we have in place with the iPad. So, we heard pretty clearly from all of the parties we've talked to so far, the clear preference is to continue with iPad for the reasons of familiarity, the uses that we're using in many different subject areas, the investments we've made already into learning and into applications and such. And then, we still have to do something to say, how do we buoy up the needs in other areas where the iPad is not fully meeting their needs? And so, that could look like Chromebook cart for our H-Wing, for example. It could look like more classroom keyboards. It could look like an option for a student to check out a keyboard and maybe keep it for a year, or keep it for however long they need it. And that's where we need some more student input as well, what you want to work on when you see having this device, and what do you supplement to do all of the work that you need to do, and how does that work easiest for you? So, the changes for this lease is that they're all full-size iPads. That's a win in many ways. Maybe, I was going to say not the least of which, but it's the one that we hate to think about, the logistics of testing. You can test on a full-size iPad, and it has been our most stable testing environment for MCA and for MAP for that matter, but MCA is the big one that really upsets the schedule of particularly our middle school. Since they have moved to iPad testing, it has been so much smoother. It works well, and it doesn't displace students. They don't need to cram through a schedule in their computer labs to do the testing. It's very helpful. We can do the same thing with our elementaries moving forward, because they will have full-size iPads, which they don't currently have. So, that will be helpful in that sense, but also just for the, the screen real estate, to be able to write on a device that has a little bit more space, to type on a device that has a little bit more space, so on and so forth. So, you see the pencil in some of the examples there, what you could do with that pencil, it's pretty, pretty handy. So, providing that, I think, is also a win. It's not a pencil, I have to get my language right, Dr. Hillman. I see the smile there. It is a crayon, but when I say crayon, it feels like it's only for kids. And it is the thing that I am currently using, and I love it. So, the other thing that we get with this lease is expanding the one-to-one to grade three, and that was a question I got from a teacher today. Are we going to do that? And I said, "That's the hope." So, some happiness with that. And with that, I will entertain questions.
Excellent. Well, every time you come back, you have new things to add, and it just gets better and better. So, it's good stuff, and like the process that you went to get to this place. So, board members, questions, comments? Helen?
So, thank you for taking us through all of the information that you've been taking us through, through the work sessions and these meetings. I particularly like the idea of the contingency plan for the 100 or so. I think that's, that's worked with, for us in other areas where we're trying to differentiate needs, and so I liked that, that part of the proposal. I was wondering on that Apple crayon, or the crayons and the Apple services for asset-tagging, are the crayons part of that? Is that?
They're not part of the asset-tagging, as far as I know. I think nobody has asset-tagged a crayon that I know of yet. Mary Grace's presentation is going to show something really awesome that Steve Taggart got through a grant, and Matt and I were kind of working up a little plan that maybe we could do that ourselves. We'll see. But we are thinking about how that might work to asset-tag that crayon, and even to deploy that crayon. Do students want the responsibility of it? What if I lose it? Those kinds of pieces. I have questions about it, and I want to work with, with Mr. Gellino and Mr. Lear on that as well.
So, the asset-taking is for the?
For the iPad.
Not the case, just the device?
Just the iPad, which is what we've done in the past. That crayon piece?
Talk about the piece having a clear back.
Yeah. Yep, so the cases we use, I should have brought it down here, have a clear back, so the, the tag is on the inside, and you can see through and scan it from, without taking the case off, which is helpful. So, they would come to us actually with that asset tag on them, and we would just get a spreadsheet with all of the information on each of the devices that we would upload into our system. They would scan right away from the start, and they would be cased as well, so we wouldn't be putting any, the Hillman children's fingers will be saved, as well as the Bruski children. So, that's a, that's a, that's a win. We have paid people to do that in the past. We usually use this area and line up all these iPads and start a system to label them all up and make sure that we get the right tag on the right iPad, because it actually matters which one gets the tag, and they are not in any order in the boxes. So, it's a lot.
Okay, great. Tom?
Sorry. I know what you're talking about as far as the thing that Mr. Taggart got. In fact, there's some instructables online that shows engraving on pencils, so it can be done.
Go ahead, sorry.
A parent asked, "Who's responsible if you lose a pen or break a pen? Who pays for that?"
So, that's the question of responsibility. So, the crayon is $50, and I would like to say we just provide everyone a crayon. But if that crayon is lost and we don't recoup anything for that crayon, there's some, there's some hardship in being able to provide a crayon for that next year of kids who needs one. And so, we do need to have the crayon either included in the iPad protection plan, which has been a conversation that Val and I have had. What if we went back, we, we reduced our iPad protection plan rates from 25 for full-price lunch, and 20 for reduced, and 15 for free lunch, to $5 lower for each of those? So, 20, 15, 10. What if we went back up that $5, but also covered the crayon? That could be a possibility. So, if you lose the crayon, we won't give you another one during the year and say, "Hey, it's covered, just, just take it and run." But at the end of the year, if you've got the insurance, you've lost your crayon, it could be covered. We're working out how the details of that might work. It's a new, it's a new territory to wonder, you know, I kind of think they won't get lost a lot. Maybe that's optimistic of me, but the, the case does have a slot to, to store them, it's wrapped inside, and I think it's valuable. I think once you try it and you go, "Oh, my gosh, I like this. It writes so well on the iPad." I think once you realize that, you go, "I want to keep this, because it works well."
Do they, would they break easily, or are they just plastic?
I don't think they'll break easily. I think they're pretty durable. Now, we haven't used them with students yet, so students usually have a different experience than I do with devices, so I'm 100% sure, but they're pretty durable.
And are they made with a, a unique iPad?
No, they're not. That's another benefit of the Logitech crayon over the Apple pencil, is that it can just touch and go. You can just write on the screen, so it doesn't have a Bluetooth connection. Bluetooth connection is great if it's just your stuff, but when you have like, you know, 1,300 students that have a Bluetooth connection, and then you want to pair a different one, it's kind of a mess.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a couple of questions. First, you know, it's, it clearly understand that you have so many of the details to work out, and I just appreciate the level of detail that you work things through, and I think that was a reason why our initial rollout of technology was so good. Sure, there's a few hiccups along the way, but you think through all scenarios, so I really appreciate that. And I appreciate the point we're at right now, which is we need to decide next meeting how we're going to move forward. So, you know, with the understanding that there are still details to work out. So, you did allude to the student insurance. So, is it, at this juncture, you think we will continue with the insurance as we have, just sort of modifying how much it would be and that sort of thing?
Yeah. I would envision that we would.
Okay. And then, you also alluded to the value of our current devices. So, when would we know that? That's after it gets turned, they get turned and cracked and examined and?
Well, you can get a quote for, valuable for 30 days, or valid for 30 days. So, my intention is on May 15th, or right about there, to go and get quotes from a few different companies that buy devices back, and whoever is the highest bidder for condition of device and what they will pay us, we will go with. I did already get a quote just to feel it out a little bit, and it looks like for a device that's in very good shape, we would get about $80. For a device, even a device with a broken screen would net us $40.
Okay.
So, between 40 and 80 for each of our iPads, and we will be shipping back right around $4,000. So, we, we should end up with a significant amount of money coming back from those.
Okay. Excellent. The other, I know you touched on this at our work session, where we talked about students who use the iPad in the summer. So, what would be the plan to ensure that the students who want them would have them based on your turn-in and distribution of new schedule?
Yep. So, that one's an interesting one, because that in our parent survey was one of the comments that, that did rise up several times, especially at our middle school level, was maybe to not have them home for the summer. So, my ideal plan here would be to have several options for getting them immediately once school is out. So, once you are ready to have your iPad and you want to come and get it, you sure can, and we would set up maybe kind of a, a few times in June, a couple in July, more in August to get your iPad. With brand-new devices, we could, I mean, we could distribute them on the last day of school. And then, we send them home, and if there's not a need for the device, it runs the risk of breaking or coming back in not tip-top shape. And I think with brand-new devices, if we can keep them here and have them ready to go for the school year, because kids get them right close to the start of the school year, that's great. If they need them over the summer, we sure want them to have them. So, the things that have used them in the past, the online PE classes use them, the driver's ed students use them, the football team uses them once they start practicing, web leaders and link leaders have used them. So, all of those groups, we would be happy to go and roll them out right when they're meeting even. And it's, it's a simple rollout, because you're not matching one iPad to a kid. You can grab one from the top of the stack and check it out to the kid and say, "Here you go." So, that would be my, my vision for that.
Okay.
or coming back in not tip-top shape. And I think with brand-new devices, if we can keep them here and have them ready to go for the school year, because kids get them right close to the start of the school year, that's great. If they need them over the summer, we sure want them to have them. So the things that have used them in the past, the online PE classes use them, the driver's ed students use them, the football team uses them once they start practicing, web leaders and link leaders have used them. So all of those groups, we would be happy to go and roll them out right when they're meeting even. And it's a simple rollout, because you're not matching one iPad to a kid. You can grab one from the top of the stack and check it out to the kid and say, "Here you go." So that would be my vision for that.
Okay. And then do you envision at that time, based on how we did the initial rollout, that the insurance would be part of that distribution process?
I would imagine.
Okay, excellent. So any other questions or comments?
I think that, you know, you've just done a masterful job of researching and surveying the community and our stakeholders in terms of, you know, what the best way to move forward with this. I know you really crunched the numbers to try to come in at that 422, but I think that 1% is well justified in terms of the additional dollars that we will get for that. So, you know, really great work. And again, we know this is just the beginning of a lot of more decisions you'll have to make, but we really appreciate the level of detail that you get to with this technology plan. So thank you. So as a reminder, board members, we will have this as an item for individual action at our next meeting in April, and then Kim can move forward. Excellent.
I'll still come. Thank you.
All right, excellent. So our next item for discussion is Mary Grace Hansen, our Director of Teaching and Learning, is going to give us a teaching and learning update. And Mary Grace Hansen's PowerPoint was in your pocket.
Yes. Thank you for this opportunity to present some of the work that the Teaching and Learning Department has been up to this year. The first item is Northfield Forward, and this is a committee that is made up of school board members, parents, teachers, students, and community members. And we meet four times each year. And the purpose of our meetings is to provide feedback and suggestions on the world's best workforce, the evidence of practice documents, and the site improvement plans for each building. Three meetings begin with a signature presentation from PLCs. The first one this year was the eighth-grade science department that explained what they have been doing in their PLC and how they have worked to improve the scores on the MCAs. The second one was the reading intervention from Greenville Park and describing their procedures and their results. And our final presentation was something we hadn't had before. A student from Carlton had done a research project with fifth graders from Sibley and Greenville Park, and she presented her research at the meeting. Next year, we're going to meet four times again. In October, we will have the world's best workforce presentation, and hopefully included with that will be the Achievement and Integration Program. In November, we will cover the first-quarter evidence of practice documents. In February, we'll provide feedback to the principals on their school site improvement plans. And then in April, we'll look at third-quarter evidence of practice documents and provide feedback to each PLC on those. And the picture was taken at our last meeting, and it was group work on providing some feedback to the school improvement plans. In literacy, which I'm sure you know we have been extremely busy with this year, teachers have participated in over 30 hours of professional learning and staff development. And this is both with in-person trainers and through live webinars. And in fact, this spring, from the spring break until June, teachers are also provided four hours off-contract to organize their classroom libraries to match the genres in making meaning. After they've done almost a full year of CCC, Collaborative Classroom, they have a good idea of where their classroom libraries are lacking. June is going to be extremely busy. CCC and Hamlin are providing an institute on June 11th through 13th, and we currently have 25 teachers that have registered for that. Then on August 20th, we begin our second year of implementation, and we're starting that with having Mary Tavigia, our trainer, come for the day. And she will spend a half a day with our new teachers to the elementary to get them up to speed, and then a half a day with our other teachers for any updates or additional training. We will do the three days of onsite lesson training like we did twice this year. So we had six, well, actually, we had five days. One was a snow day, believe it or not. So each grade level will get a half day with the trainer. She will go through lesson planning, actually teach the lesson in one of our classrooms, and then have time for the teachers to debrief what they have learned about that. The consistency in having a consistent program across all three buildings has really been beneficial. When teachers get together, they have common language, common lesson plans, and a great deal to discuss. And they've shared good ideas. There've also been concerns, and, you know, "How do you handle this? How do you handle that?" And they've been able to share ideas and strategies and helpful hints. And even the students have responded well. Part of the reason we chose Collaborative Classroom is because of the social-emotional, the building of community in classrooms. And one of their strategies is students turn and talk to each other. And one little guy, when his mom picked him up at school, she said, "Well, how was your day?" He said, "Oh, I talked a lot." And that's great, because we want children to share their learning and their thinking. That's how they learn. Northfield Promise and Strive Together Move Five have been very helpful in the past several years in promoting and supporting literacy in the schools and the community, and we have really appreciated their partnership. This picture was taken in our February day, when we had two trainers come from Collaborative, actually, we had three trainers come from Collaborative Classroom, and this is in the third-through-fifth grade group. The K-2 group met in the media center. And then we had special ed teachers and reading interventionists meet in the classroom to have the systematic instruction and phonics. So we had three trainers come that day. Also, as part of teaching and learning, we have the standards and curriculum. This picture is actually taken from our art department. If you walk down there, you will see these things hanging on the walls. The art standards were supposed to have been approved last year. They're still in the approval stage, but they anticipate there will not be any changes. So we have started meeting. And the arts include music and the visual arts. So the standards are in five areas: foundational skills, create, and then perform in the music department, and present in the art department, respond, and create. The standards will be fully implemented in the school year 2021, '22. So the next two years are spent in studying the standards, aligning them with the coursework, and then making sure we have all the curriculum materials and the professional development necessary to implement these standards fully. Dr. Wendy Barton is going to meet with the K-12 music teachers. She's scheduled for a day in May. And Jeremy Hollein, some of you may recognize his name, he was an art teacher here in Northfield, has been meeting with the K-12 art teachers already this year. And they work for the Purpitch Center for the Arts and MDE. There's a cooperation between the two entities to provide us with the staff development. The discussions have been great. I've hated to have them end, because I have learned so much. Our teachers are extremely thoughtful and very concerned about their artists and their musicians. And they have such knowledge about their subject and such care and concern for their students. The science standards are under review right now. They are developing the third and hopefully final draft, which will be available to us in May, and then they will go into the rulemaking process. Tammy McDonough, Mark Ogier, and Craig Johnson and I have attended meetings at MDE to go over these standards. And part of the reason for this is they have asked teachers and community to provide feedback. So the three teachers have come back and met with their science departments and said, "Please provide feedback. This is your opportunity." So hopefully in May, we will be able to attend a meeting and get the final draft of the standards that will go up for approval. The new standards are a little bit different than the old standards, so this will be a bit of a challenge, but our teachers are very much up to the task. It potentially will add an Earth and Space Science class at the high school, and they are moving physical, or physical science to the eighth grade in order, the rationale is because it will match up better with algebra, which is also taught in eighth grade. So that's their rationale. So we will have to be prepared for changes, perhaps in licensure with teachers, and definitely with curriculum materials. And when they develop the standards and hand us the new standards, they will also hand us a timeline for full implementation. It will probably be a gradual implementation. Now, whether they do it by starting in kindergarten or starting in middle school, we don't know yet. Both ideas have been discussed. But we will have three to five years to fully implement the standards, so that will give us time to study the standards, order materials, and again, provide some staff development. Northfield ENACT. This is a group that is a combination of the old DCSDC Committee and the Technology Committee. And Kim and I co-facilitate that group. We meet three times each school year, early in September, early in December, and February generally. And the purpose of our group is to provide grants for teachers so they can do some innovative things in their classroom that they wouldn't have the opportunity to do otherwise. For each meeting, we've budgeted about $6,000 for grants, and we've awarded seven grants this year for a total of $13,128.85. So Val, we came in under budget, so that's always a good thing. In order to apply for a grant, teachers have to complete a form with a SMART goal for their project, a budget sheet, and they also have to come before the committee and provide a short three-to-five-minute presentation to explain their project and what they want to do. And then the final requirement is to submit a short video of their project. And what happened?
I don't know.
Okay. We have, we had a video of, a compilation of the videos, and Kim will...
Make it work?
Make it work. There you go. While she's doing that, why don't I entertain the questions instead of wait until after?
Just after the questions, just a second.
What?
Just see if it's after the questions, just a second.
Press the button.
Yeah.
No? So while Kim is pulling up the video, I will entertain any questions or comments that you might have.
Perfect. Board members, questions, comments? Ellen?
So thanks, Mary Grace. It's great to hear about all of the committee's works. I am curious, because I was on DPAC forever, and now it's Northfield Forward. Looking now at this, we've had this new format now for two years, I think, or...
This is the second year, correct.
Yeah. So what do you think has been the impact of the, before when we had DPAC, we would hear them come in May, we would know what the goals were, and then we would look at how they would line up. But now it's less clear to the board, maybe, what the impact is?
Sure. Well, the great thing is, the committee is providing feedback directly to the teachers and to the principals. And one of the things, the teachers are quite grateful that someone is actually reading their evidence of practice, because before, they didn't know if anyone was reading this. And it's always gratifying to have someone acknowledge your work and to provide suggestions for continuous improvement. So that has been a huge impact.
Great question. Other questions? I, oh, Rob, go ahead.
So with the art and music standards...
Sure.
...their standards in language arts, and reading, and math, and science, and those get tested on the MCAs, what are the assessments that they're going to look for for art and music?
Oh, a question after my own heart, because that's one of the things that when we start the standards, and they say, "Okay, well, we can do this. We can do this." My next question is always, "How do you know? How are you going to assess that?" So that is left up to local control to develop their own assessments. Our elementary art teachers, and I think Kate Wood's represented several years ago, about the common assessments the elementary art people have developed. But they are, they develop their own assessments. But that is one of the questions. In fact, I include a column on our documents for assessment. So not only do we have the standard and the benchmark, but how did you actually assess it so that you know the kiddo has accomplished that? So, great question.
Other questions or comments?
I had a question about the science, the new curriculum. So is it about a seven-year cycle that curriculum review takes place?
It's, well, we're following the State Department, and theirs is every 10 years.
Every 10, okay.
Right. But in between there, we can't just say if something's not working after four years, that, "Okay, in six years, kids, you'll be okay." So teachers, you know, update and look at their data and say, "Hey, I need either some new materials to supplement, or we need to do something, tweak something to make it so our students are successful."
Okay. So, and then you sort of indicated that science, there are some changes. Does that, in the grand scheme of things, does that feel like a bigger curriculum change than you've seen in other areas? Is science like, this is kind of more than we usually see, or is it about what?
It's a little bit more than we usually see. They're going to what they call cross-cutting and combination. It's very difficult to say it's just biology, because there's some chemistry in biology. There's some physics in biology. So there, and a lot more inquiry method rather than memorized content. So a lot more hands-on.
Okay. Okay. And I'm glad Ellen asked that question, because I've been, was part of DPAC for a very long time, and it's just the direction Northfield Forward's taken, I think, is really positive. And I'm assuming that if the teaching staff has liked the evidence of practice reviewing their PLC reports, have the principals found that to be effective for them in terms of our review of the site improvement plans?
Yes. In fact, I've been delivering those today and last week, and they have, and just as we are going to change our evidence of practice reports, previously, we've just done that separately at the end of each semester. We're going to move to quarterly. So they'll have quarterly goals, and it will be on one form. So when we review the documents in the third quarter, we'll be able to see first, second, third quarter all together, which hopefully will make it easier for the principals and easier for the teachers to have everything in one place. Right now, they fill out a separate SMART goal form, and then a separate EOP form, evidence of practice form, and hopefully, this will get everything, the data and everything on one form. So...
Okay, excellent. So I guess my last question is sort of a segue into the video, because my question was, how is that video sort of shared broadly through the district? Because it seems like, you know, there's been some great, great grants that have been given for really worthy-type projects. And so I was wondering how those are shared.
Yeah. Well, actually, we haven't really talked about sharing it with a wider audience, because we didn't know what we were going to find this year.
Oh, sure.
The videos have been great. It's just been fascinating to watch them. We did share them. We asked that any of them that could be ready by our February meeting. So we did share them at our February meeting. And the video you're about to see is a compilation of all of the videos, you know, of little snippets of each one, rather than...
I think there is too, is that we can share these videos through our district staff newsletters so that every week, or every Wednesday after the board meeting, we have a district-wide staff newsletter that we include content like this. And so as we put this together, I'm sure this is something that we can bullet. Anita Azzi puts that together, and we can actually create links to the video so that that gets shared with a wider audience, because that's the point. The point of the ENACT grants is to try something innovative, to see how does it work for you. And then, of course, we want to share those bright spots and those best practices, so other people can say, "Oh, yes, I could do something like that." And even if it's not specific to their content area, they at least have some concepts of some other kinds of things, of how they could do things differently. So I think that that's the way that we'll do it.
Excellent.
And teachers don't have to do this just with their grade level or their subject area. They can do cross-grade level and cross-subject areas. And we did have a middle school do Steve Taggart in CTE and Lindsay Dager in the FACS program combined to do a grant. You'll see part of that. In fact, the glow forge layer is there. So are there any other questions, or should we end with the video?
Board members, any other questions?
No, I think...
Okay. Thank you for your time, and we'll... Yes, thanks, Mary Grace.
End with the video. I'll just do a little voiceover. This is the middle school science that asks for winter bird feeders to do observations. The ALC requested dollhouses for the students to build. This is the implementation of PBIS unconscious discipline at the preschool. And every child has a job. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mary Grace Hanson. Okay. And Kim Brisky. All right. So we will move on to our next item for discussion, which is the policy committee recommendations first reading. Dr. Hillman?
Well, good evening again, and really excited to bring this to you this evening, because it has been, started with our vision of how we would cycle our policies, just like we cycle our curriculum, wanting to make sure we have an opportunity for the board as a governance board to be able to regularly review our policies. Some of you who have been on the board for a while know that when my predecessor and mentor, Dr. Chris Richardson, came to the school district in 2004, there was a real heavy lift on policy, because at that time, policy needed to be updated. Dr. Richardson brought a number of policy pieces from Oseo, his previous school district, and the district really just did this very heavy lift on policy, which, you know, for those of us who like policy, that's exciting. It doesn't appeal to everyone, let's just say that. And so for a number of years, we simply made very minor updates to policies as the School Boards Association made those recommendations. But it's become very clear that we really need to be intentional about taking a look at our policies on a regular basis. And so we have established a cycle that we have, we brought back the board policy committee. That policy committee includes Dr. Hardy and Dr. Iverson and Noel Stratmon on that committee, as well as having some representatives from our district youth council. And then Anita Ozzy and I also serve on that committee. And then we bring ad hoc members of the, to the committee as needed. So, for example, if we're looking through a finance policy, Val Mertsdorf might be there. Or as we're looking at a facilities policy, our director of buildings and grounds, Jim Colseth, might be there. And so really trying to be intentional about how we look at those policies. And as you know, when we adopt policy, we even have a policy on how to adopt policies. And so, of course, required to look at each policy at least at two meetings unless it's a non-significant change, or if there's an emergency. And of course, that's outlined in the policy on policies. So tonight, we're bringing a pretty good chunk to you for first reading. We're not asking, of course, for any kind of action this evening. So all of the policies that have been brought to you have been reviewed by the policy committee. The changes were suggested by the policy committee. When appropriate, we've checked with other outside agencies to verify or to check what the latest is in those areas. And in some cases, as we move forward, some policies may not need to be updated. And in that case, the board will not be asked to look at it, it will simply be updated on the website that the policy committee reviewed this policy in whatever year of the cycle that they did. Because we want to make sure we're at least taking a look at those kinds of things every few years. And even when we don't need to change a policy, you know, sometimes it might be just updating language to appropriate vernacular for this day and age, as opposed to 15, or in some cases, policies that were originally written 20 years ago, and the content is still very good, but there might be some language or some vocabulary that needs to be updated. And so tonight, we just simply offer a number of policies for you. You'll see this year, we're really focusing on the 200 series, the 800 series. We'll also bring, be bringing you some 900 series yet this spring, but we wanted to bring this chunk of them to you tonight so that you could have the opportunity for the first reading. And we'll certainly answer any questions that people might have at this time.
Okay, excellent. Board members, questions or comments as you did the reading over the weekend, did you do reading over the weekend on multiple pages? Ellen?
So first, I wanted to thank Dr. Hillman and Anita, because it's really nice to see, you know, we had these discussions over time, and then the work that you put into, even the consistency in the format, the purpose statement, I really appreciated seeing all that. The one question I had was on policy 802, and it was just, one of the things we were doing was looking at MSBA model policy, and that one was one where we weren't using some of their items, and I wasn't sure. They got kind of long, so I could imagine us wanting to abbreviate, but we just didn't include them. So I wasn't sure. And I couldn't remember from our discussions on that particular one.
So we looked at that today, because we had...
Oh, and that's the contracts under, over $175,000...
Yes.
...under the 802 policy.
And so that is a part that we have inadvertently omitted here, which is exactly why we have a first reading and a second reading. So when we bring you the final recommendation, the next time, we'll include those couple of pieces from the MSBA model policy. Again, remember, MSBA has the model policy. It's MSB and MASA collaborating. And the key thing is that school boards do not have to take those, right? It's, of course, local decision in most cases. So there are MSB model policies that we look at, and we look at our local conditions, and we determine whether or not we need to use part of it. But in this case, that is something that we believe would strengthen the policy, and so we'll make sure that we bring that forward for the second and final reading the next time. And thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Excellent. Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I agree with Ellen. I thought the format was really great, and I was...
Well, we have to be clear, the format is all Anita. She has taken care of that very well.
She did an excellent job. It was really, because it's pretty unwieldy to try to indicate what's new, what's being deleted, what's being added, where, you know, and how the language is being changed. And it was just laid out so, so well. So thank you. Any other questions or comments? No?
I'd like to express my appreciation also to Anita. Policies can't be sort of okay. They have to be exactly okay. And so thank you very much for making it exactly okay.
And again, you know, this is a lot of reading this time, so we provide it to you digitally so that you can not have to have all of that paper. If it is something that you see, oh, I'd like to have those policies in paper, we'll certainly print them and get them to you. And then we will ask for approval on these the next time around, and hopefully, by next time, we'll have some of the... There's a couple of 900 policies that are going to take us a little bit longer, so you may not see those until June. And that's okay. I mean, those are things that we want to look for. And then I just think the other piece that you need to know is, as you recall, we talked extensively last year about student handbooks. Because student handbooks, once they are adopted by the board in June, are official policy for the next year. So as you know, when we distribute that responsibility to buildings, we sometimes get those kinds of things that come back in inconsistent fashion, through no one's fault of their own. Every building is doing it slightly differently. But one of the things that we know, we're hearing from parents, is to make sure that in our communications that transcend a building or an age level, like a student handbook, can we have some consistency in how something might be identified, or where it's located, for example, in one handbook, in the elementary school handbook, and if you look at the same, you know, number and things like that, in the middle school handbook, could it be more similar than it is now? So we have actually taken the response, I shouldn't say we, Anita has taken the responsibility back to the superintendent's office to house all of those student handbooks. She is putting them in a consistent, consistent format and manner, just like we've done with the policies. As we speak, in the last couple of weeks, we've asked buildings to provide any updates that they might have for those. And then we are, our plan is to bring that policy committee back to take an initial look at that yet. And then our goal would be that by the second board meeting in May, you have an opportunity to see those handbooks, so that we have two chances to read it like we have, you know, for regular policy development. And so even though it's not listed as a policy, the key thing is that student handbook has the weight of policy. So we want to make sure we have the two readings like we normally do. And so we're really pleased with the progress that we've made in the last year on that. Those we will also provide you, to you exclusively digitally, because if you remember last year, how much paper we ended up giving you with that. And if you want a copy in paper, of course, we can get that to you too. So thanks for the opportunity to get this on a cycle and make sure that we're systematic in how we approach policy development and review. And we're excited to check off the first year off the box.
An excellent committee you've assembled, because you can just see the level of detail that each of the, every line was reviewed and thought about carefully. Before, when the next line was moved on to, you could just see it was a really good process. Ellen?
I just wanted, I just wanted to recognize Joseph and Jack, who were the two students. And, you know, for, you think about policy, it's not a, it's kind of, it can be kind of a heavy lift, and they both contributed to the meetings and caught things that, you know, with a kind of fresh student eye. So it would be really helpful to have the students there.
Excellent. So hopefully, are they seniors? Will they be around for multiple policies?
I think Jack is a senior. I think Joseph isn't underclassmen yet.
Maybe he'll come back and have...
No. And again, that's part of our work on students on board, and so we've really worked with the DUIC. In the past, the district youth council would have some ad hoc committees that they would put together. And then when some students graduated, the next group might not have that same passion. So we collaborated with Malia Fallon and said, you know, in some cases, you'll see that a school board might have a student representative, a non-voting student representative. Well, of course, we want to have more than one student involved. And so for all of the different kinds of advisory committees that we have, finance advisory, facilities advisory, Northfield Forward, all those are including the policy committee, we have two students representing the district youth council. This has given our students some really meaningful work to do, rather than having a complete changeover every year, and what one group might be passionate about it, something and another not. And so we do are trying to make sure that there's, there's always going to be one student who gets to stay on that committee over a couple of years. The wellness committee is another group that we've had. So we've had really good student participation in these committees that are making real recommendations and real work for the operation of the school district. And so far, we've had very positive feedback on that.
Excellent. Yes, the students on Northfield Forward were really excellent, and we know there's a long line of excellent students waiting to have their opportunity. So that's great. Okay. So again, if you...
No, I won't.
Oh, I'm sorry, Noel.
I have a copy, a hard copy, if someone would like them.
Oh, okay. Excellent. So if someone would like to see that. We do have two weeks to our next meeting, in which we will take formal action on those policy changes. Our next item for discussion is change order limits around the current bond referendum projects. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, and we'll talk a little bit about a construction update later in the agenda. But one of the next things, when, as things are really getting real, we're looking in the next month or so to probably bid our first project, the Bridgewater Elementary addition and renovation. And so one of the tasks that needs to be completed as part of that is looking at how we handle change orders. Now, my not-so-subtle joke, and I'm actually somewhat serious about it, is our goal will be to have no change orders. But as I see some of our maintenance staff in the room, they may say, ah, that's funny, Matt, there's always a change order. And so what we want to do is, we want to have a very deliberate and comprehensive process of how we approve change orders. And so we have, as you know, in our work session, we brought you a number of different options that other school districts use to approve change orders. It's not, it's not feasible if we have to move a light switch, you know, which I've been involved in building projects where we've had to move a light switch. That's not feasible to bring back to the school board on every time. So we have four different levels of what we're looking at in terms of how we would handle change orders. And of course, the, from the district's perspective, it'll be myself, Jim Colseth, our director of buildings and grounds, and Val Mertsdorf, our finance director. Anything in here where you see facilities director and finance director and superintendent, that means all three of us need to be in agreement before we would move forward, because we want to make sure we, all three of us come at this from a variety of different leadership perspectives. And so we want to make sure that we have that. So what you'll see is a change order of $1,000 or less, regardless of the cumulative total, that can be approved by the three of us together, all saying, yes, this is the way we need to do things. The second level is, we're looking at up to 2% of each project's cost that could be approved by the same three individuals, again, all voting together and being in agreement on it. And again, as the examples you saw at the work session had a dollar-figure total, regardless of the project. Well, we have five different projects that we're looking at, and all of them are very different prices. So if we were to set a $25,000 change order limit for that first, well, that's very different for the Longfellow project versus the new Greenville Park Elementary project. So Val Mertsdorf looked at this and put this piece together in terms of this concept of looking at the cascading percentage-wise. So up to 2% of the project cost could be approved by Val, myself, and Jim Colseth. Again, all agreeing. And we work well enough together that if one of us says no, that's the answer of the group. The project oversight committee, and I want to be really clear about this, the project oversight committee is a collaboration that includes our architectural firm, it includes our construction management firm, then there are board members on that committee. Noel Stratmon and Julie Pritchard sit on that committee as board members, myself, Val Mertsdorf, Jim Colseth from our buildings and grounds department are the district folks. Anita Ozzy sits on that committee, as well as Dorothy Cohen from our facilities department. And so that group, when we're talking about that group agreeing, that does not count the architectural firm and the construction management firm. That is the district-level decision-makers on that project oversight committee, who could then approve up to 3% of the project cost. And then finally, anything over that 3% of the project cost, as illustrated in the table, we would bring to you as the full board. Now, our hope is that we don't ever get there, but we need to have this in place. And I just, people need to know that this is the kind of thing, that if we do need to look at something above 3%, that's the kind of thing where we may call a special board meeting specific for that topic. If we can partner with a regular board meeting, we will. But as we get into managing five different projects, I just want to be straightforward, we talked about this before, that there's the possibility that we might have to have some special meetings, of course, with the 72-hours advance notice and all those kinds of things. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we have a plan for how to address these. First of all, we want to have a plan to minimize them. And the plan to minimize them is good planning and having a lot of input upfront, which you know we've already done with the core planning committees. You've seen some of the work of the core planning committees already. We're working through user groups, through a couple of projects now, where it's a much more detailed level of feedback. And so our hope is that with good design and making sure, especially in the way that we're doing with the construction manager firm bidding out various parts of the job, we believe that we're going to be able to do a better job than in general of just approving everything all at once. We're going to be very intentional about each portion of the project and how those are approved. And then with this plan of how we would address chain order, change orders, we believe that we have a comprehensive approach that will make sure that we come in on budget and on time, and make sure that these are facilities that the community can be proud of. They've entrusted us with their hard-earned money, and we want to make sure that they get the return on that investment. So not asking you to approve this tonight, simply first opportunity for you to think about it. Val, did I miss anything that you want to add? Questions that people have? Tom?
So for the $1,000 change order, either one of you, either one of you three can do it, or do you all three have to still do it?
All three of us would approve it, because we talked about this in the old days, you know, you want to be able to empower someone right on the site to do it. However, we have these things called cell phones, you know, that we can do multiple calls, and we have discussed that we just, we are comfortable, because we all see things from different angles. We want to make sure that the three of us are on the same page. So we have a strategy, if that comes up, we can make an immediate three-way phone call, and we can discuss the issue and then make a decision right then and there. So yes, we would still do that, but it wouldn't be toward the cumulative total.
Noel?
Sometimes it isn't the amount of the change order, but the implication of the change order. Is this integrated into the discussion too?
I would argue that it is, by having the three-person team to agree, because one of the reasons that we have been a good team is that we all come at it from a slightly different angle. And usually, with all three of us putting our heads together, we see a lot of those implications. And then we will also reach out, because we know who are the people in the district who have the best angle on a particular point. So for example, if we're discussing a change order that might involve some technology, we're going to, of course, bring Kim Brisky into the mix. If we're talking about something from a pedagogical or instructional perspective, we're going to, of course, involve the building principal and any teachers that might be appropriate. So we think by having this three-person, everybody's got to have the thumbs up, we think that that gives us the best chance, Noel, to avoid any issues as what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I have a question about, oh, I'm sorry, Rob, did you have a question? Okay. So I had a question about the $1,000 change order. So is it a case where a construction worker would be on-site and need to make that change, and then if... And then if one of the three weren't available, you would lose that particular productivity out of that, you know, out of that project? You know, just in thinking about particularly Greenville where, you know, we do have to open by fall of '20. Or a change order is usually done at a morning meeting and then communicated that way? Or is it kind of an on-the-spot kind of, we got to do this right now to where if you're in a meeting, which people have meetings that they're not able to necessarily extract themselves from? And I'm just-
Except for when we're talking about change orders, then you extract.
Well, but I'm just thinking, you know, again, we know the $1,000 threshold is minimal. So when do those change orders sort of come to light? And then is it, you know, realistic that three people would weigh, would have the opportunity to weigh in and not lose, you know, the productivity of whatever they were working on at the time?
So Julie, one of the things that we're really impressed with the Knutson Construction Management Firm is the daily morning meeting, as you talked about. And when we've talked with Knutson and their team who is going to be on-site here, they have described how they don't only look at that day, but they're actually looking at several days out. And so looking at what are those pieces that are coming down the pike? Do you have all the equipment? Do you have the plans? And so in talking with other districts who have used Knutson, they would back up the fact that there's a very planful approach to this. And so frankly, they're just, there should not be an emergency that can't be resolved within, by the next day. And we would much rather take that, sometimes if you take that day to get it right, it saves you a ton of things down the line. So our intent is to be disciplined in terms of making sure that we work with, one of the questions that we asked when we interviewed the five different construction management firms that we were considering was how do they handle change orders? And we believe that Knutson Construction Management had the strongest answer in the group of talking about the process that they use on-site and managing the subcontractors to ensure that there are limited amounts of surprises. And so, you know, we do have the ability to communicate pretty quickly and of course, there might be circumstances. But it's, for the most part, is, would be much better for us to take the time than just to say, yeah, just go ahead and do that because we want to make sure that we think even something as simple as that through.
Okay.
Because of what Noel said about you make one change without thinking about the implications, now a $1,000 change order can become something much more.
Good point. Excellent. Okay, other questions or comments? So we will take this as an item for individual action at our next meeting. I appreciate the thinking around this plan and the way you've really thought about the different scenarios and how to address them. So thank you for that work.
My pleasure.
So we'll move on now to our next item for discussion, which is the gymnastics lease plan. Director of Finance, Val Murstorf, will present. And just as a reminder to board members, there was additional information in the table file. Oh?
Thank you. So we had a very detailed conversation at the work session about two different options that we have for gymnastics, one being the potential of staying in the current facility. I'm calling it the Kmart facility because everyone knows that reference for right now. Chris Brown and his family brought us a proposal that we looked at in detail. And the other option being partnering with Farmington Gymnastics. I did confirm that they would charge the same $10,000 lease that they had proposed for the past year as well. So that, I had 10 to 12, I think, in my notes from the work session. So there was a lot of good discussion about the pros and cons of both of those pieces. In addition to that, Joel Olson, our activities director, and myself have reached out to both Cannon Falls and Randolph, who we partner for gymnastics, to see if they have any space available. Both indicated they would have space and be willing to do a meet or an invite, but not necessarily having the space for a consistent, ongoing practice setup. So the equipment setup and takedown is very time-consuming, so having one competition or meet wouldn't necessarily be an ideal situation. In addition, I had a couple of questions come in before the board meeting about just the cost for athlete and kind of how that plays out. So that was included in your table file. There's an attached report that we are required to send to MDE annually. And so the data on that report is actually our final data from '17, '18. The Activities Department fills that information out. And so it's really direct supplies and salaries and benefits and that sort of thing. It does not include transportation costs by sport or lease costs by sport, like hockey wouldn't include the ice arena cost and that sort of thing. Transportation costs will be included moving forward. We started tracking that by activity this school year, so we'll be able to do that moving forward, but that was not the case last year. And so in your table filing included the summary of the '17, '18 because you'll notice that gymnastics is not included on that summary. So Joel Olson and I went through that and did that to put in the packet for you. So you have '17, '18, '18, '19 is year-to-date. The totals are fairly complete since the season is complete, so we're not anticipating additional expenditures at this point. So you can see kind of the difference there. Really, the biggest difference from '17, '18 to '18, '19 was the fact that Chris Brown and family did not charge us a lease cost. So that was, that was really the big difference there. And supplies obviously vary from year to year. And it also doesn't include capital-type expenditures. So, you know, the costs we invest in football helmets each year would not be included in your football total, for example. And then the next two columns are the projection of what I would anticipate if we were to partner with the Farmington Gymnastics. And then the column next to that being the costs associated with the Kmart facility. And so you can see we had 18 participants in '17, '18, and 20 participants this year, so I used 19 just as an average. We do have, I believe, three students that do come from Cannon Falls. And obviously, we do have some students who are open-enrolled, but otherwise, they're considered Northfield students. So just as kind of a more complete picture, some of the questions that had been asked since the last meeting. Again, definitely pros and cons with each scenario. I know there's some concern surrounding the tax impact of the Kmart lease. It would be about $11 a year for an average $200,000 home. The $10,000 lease for Farmington would average out to about 61 cents a year using that strategy. Let's see if I have other notes here about... The other question I had that was brought up was the cost for storage. If we do opt to go with Farmington Gymnastics, what would we do with the current equipment? We could certainly have the option to sell the equipment. I don't think that that would be, that's not what I would recommend just because Farmington would not be a long-term solution at this point. And so I would rather keep the equipment in storage until we knew for sure what the long-term solution is. The cost of that is $165 a month for the trailer. I think we're probably going to need two trailers, so $2,000 to $4,000 a year for that, depending on the size of the second trailer that is required. And, so make sure I don't miss any of my points here. The other question that I had received was whether or not we could cooperate with another district that has a program. That's certainly something we could look into in conversations with Joel Olson. It sounds like that would not be, it would be an unusual thing for a program our size. It's typically more for districts who have less than eight participants and really can't run a program on their own, but it's certainly something that we could consider knowing the current situation. But again, that would also result in traveling outside the district. So the, as a reminder, the lease levy cost is lease levy added to our levy certification process. The additional transportation cost would be part of the general fund budget. So different sources of funding for those. And, yes, I know there's some concern surrounding just the tax impact, knowing that the voters supported a referendum this past November, just being cognizant of that. That's one of the considerations. So.
I think the other thing, we're not asking for approval tonight again. You know, we're trying to be very thoughtful about this, you know, trying to think both from a short-term perspective and from a long-term perspective the best that we can. So not asking for any, we just wanted, again, to piggyback off of what we talked about at the work session. We wanted to make sure that we brought you information that you had asked for at the work session as we worked through this process. But one of the things that we are concerned about is making sure that we have a plan for next year because the longer that we go, we do not want to be in the circumstance that we were last year. And again, the board was generous in helping us make sure that we could get the equipment. And of course, the Browns, we're very grateful for them for what they have provided, really saved us, you know, in terms of providing that facility for no cost to us. And then, of course, now you see what that lease actually is over time. So that's just another piece of data that we use as we make some of these decisions moving forward. So no decision tonight. We just wanted to make sure that we brought you additional information that you asked for and then entertain any questions as we move toward making some kind of decision for next year and continuing to look for a longer-term solution.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for laying this out. Board members, questions, comments? Jeff?
Do you have any kind of task force? I mean, because obviously you've got the equipment. I mean, the Farmington thing is kind of a short fix. The Kmart deal is he came in and was nice and now he wants the lease. But I mean, I guess if you're going out and looking for anything, you know, you've got the equipment, so you need, you know, you need a, what do you need for square footage? I mean, there should be all kinds of warehouse spaces that you could build out for that for, you know, a lease or whatever, because these are, I mean, $11,000 per student. I mean, we could send him to an academy for, give him a scholarship to college for 11 grand for gymnastics or something. But I don't know, I just, I see here is just, it's simple, you know, what is the criteria that we want to use as a board to make a decision on this? That's what I'd like to look at. And I think of you, Dr. Iverson, and kind of, you know, what is the criteria we want to use on this? And I always look at going back for everybody, for nobody, and case by case. This is a situation where it's case by case. We want to solve this problem, but we also want it to be sustainable. So we don't want to throw a lot of money into something. And I mean, if you're looking at $20,000 in transportation costs, maybe you go find a warehouse space. I mean, I'm pretty conservative. I'd rather put that money in a build-out or put that into something that's going to, that's going to work for the gymnastics people for, you know, years. I guess you could go out with the Kmart building and maybe you're, you're going to use that somehow as a rec center, I mean, or rent it up or something else to get money back. But again, you're kind of adding more things than you need. And that is retail space, you know, so it's kind of like, to me, what about other gyms that we have? And I don't know how much space do you need? I mean, is Longfellow out of the question? Is the old Greenville gym out of the question? I mean, I'm just wondering. I just think that we need more of a task force. And instead of two ideas, we need to have some, you know, 10 ideas and we need to have whatever that criteria is. Because we've got, I don't know, how many, how many sports do we have? I should know this, Minnesota State High School League, now that that matters, but I mean, and how do we, how do we treat? I mean, I think this, we'll solve this problem and figure it out, but what's sustainable and what's the best use of that money and just, you know, throwing away? We already have $70,000 worth of equipment. So it's just a matter of putting a big circle on there. Where's the warehouse space? What's a gym we could use? Some other, some other creative minds with a task force that could come in, you know, the people that are here that have some passion in the room that want to contribute to that, whatever our criteria is as a board and, you know, Joel Olson and finance, and we come up and just get, you know, roll our sleeves up and figure something out. And, you know, if it's a short-term fix for something for a couple of years, you got to go somewhere, fine, but, you know, what are we going to do long-term? And obviously, that's the big question.
Yep. So we did meet with all of the gymnastic coaches a couple of months ago and just brainstormed what are the options. As most of you are aware, I would say space in Northfield is fairly limited. There's not a lot of availability. And most of the things that are available would require a significant investment for overhilling, particularly ceiling height is really the biggest issue that we run into. We did look at all of the gyms in the building and the required length for the vault is longer than the middle school auxiliary gym. The Longfellow gym's definitely out of the question. So we did look at and we analyzed kind of the spaces that we have. Are there things we could restructure and move? But really, there was not, not a space that had that long runway that would result in what they were needing.
There's some warehouses in Dundas. I mean, half the time you go up to Chaska or wherever you go, most of these gymnastic clubs are in a warehouse area. So, I mean, I just, whatever we're doing with that, I just think that instead of throwing a bunch of money at a problem for a couple of years, but, you know, you're obviously working on it and you're already asking those questions. So it's just a matter of, you know, moving towards more of a criteria that we get a decision. Do we have a timeline for this then as far as what we need? I mean, it's next season.
Not, I mean, I don't have a hard date in mind. I think certainly it's not on fire today. The season starts in November, but I think the uncertainty is also weighing on people. And so making sure that we can have planning and have people know what that is.
Anybody ever reach out to colleges to see if they can help at all? I mean, I know that maybe they've got an extra gym, huh?
Yeah, an extra gym. I do believe that Joel did that and I'm not remembering that right off the top of my head. But I don't recall that they had a space that was going to work, but I'll double-check that we, that we did do that.
Well, and I think the key thing is that we all share the same goal. Our goal is to have a permanent home that is sustainable. We were able to count on something for a long time and it was no longer available to us. So I think that what we're trying to do is how can we give our team, who we're very proud of, the opportunity to have some semblance of knowing what you're doing next year with some flexibility? And then, of course, looking, how can we look at the future in a way that, as you said, can be sustainable? We do have to look at this in the broader context. And so there is going, no matter how you slice, there's going to be a short-term mix of some kind of short-term solution with some kind of longer-term option that we're going to have to consider. I think the other piece just about gym space is that even with the new elementary school, when you look at the people who want to schedule our gyms, one of the common references in Northfield is we just don't have enough gym space. And when we do a program, like the gymnastics program, to take it up and to put it up and to take it down on a daily basis, because remember, our gyms are our physical education classrooms. And so it isn't as if we can use any of the gyms in the district as a permanent home. So that equipment would have to be, you know, set up and taken down each day. Frankly, it's just probably not very practical. It would not give the kind of consistency for the equipment and those kinds of things that we're looking for. And in addition, we'd be taking out of service another space, which I think is why we moved to the gymnastics club all those years ago, if I understand the history of it. So we certainly know that we have, we don't have what we think is the perfect solution. We know that we don't. The question's about looking at other space that is available in the community. What I can assure you, Jeff, is that we have done quite a bit of that, looking at. And as Val said, this is not just going and getting, you know, a building that seems to be available. There's a number of criteria, you know, that we have to have available. People know that we are looking for space. That is frankly how we got the Kmart building because there was an article in the paper and some things on KYMN and the Browns generously reached out to us because they, so it's not a secret that we're looking for a space. And one thing that I know about people who are trying to lease space is they are very active and they know there's somebody who's looking for it. So I do think that we have done a reasonable, a reasonably good job of trying to make sure that we're aware of what is the leasing availability within the community. The colleges, frankly, they've been great partners in terms of, on an intermittent basis, but we also have to remember that these are resident colleges where students are using those facilities on a daily basis. And so there are, the colleges, I think, many times have exceeded probably what they wanted to do because we have a give-take relationship. And so we've got great partnerships, but it isn't reasonable for them to give us or lease us a space that they would be normally using with their paid student body, if that makes any sense. So I think we continue to try to look at what are other options that are available for a longer-term solution. And right now, we've got, we've narrowed it to what we think are two for the next year. It's not that others could not, you know, rear themselves at this point, but what we do want is we want to try to give some certainty to our coaches and our student athletes that we have a place for them next year. And I think that that's important. We also have a great relationship with both parties. And so- We also have a great relationship with both parties, and so whatever solution that you determine, if there is something that comes up, I think there's probably some flexibility in both of those cases, should the magic solution rear its head at some point. But right now, we want to just make sure that what we have available to you will certainly continue the process of looking at, is there something out there that we have not thought of yet? But at this point, we're looking for some feedback on these couple of different solutions for next year.
Excellent. Ellen?
So I appreciate the information in the table file, and I guess getting at what you said, Jeff, is what we, at the work session, talked about, I think is what Val gave us as we were thinking about, is there some information about cost per athlete? Would that would just help us in looking at the two options that we know of? So I appreciate at least that we have this, and it was, you know, very thorough. It'll take me a little bit more to get my head around it, but I really appreciate having that and that, the, the work that you and Joel have done in terms of checking in with Cannon Falls and Randolph. I guess I'd point a clarification, is there a location for home meets? Because I guess when, in the work session, I thought that Farmington, it wasn't certain, like that they had the space for home meets, and I know the Kmart, we would have to build out if it was gonna be a home meet. And so I wasn't sure if there was a, if that was part of one of these options.
Yep, we did verify that if we went with Farmington, that they could host meets at Farmington. Obviously, it's not physically home, but they would be able to host a meet there. Joel and I discussed, you know, paying mileage for hiring the event workers and all of those pieces, so, but it would be an option.
Ellen?
And then just one other question. I know that Alpine does do the commuting, and having had a kid that did that, one of the things was sometimes having the buses that have the Wi-Fi is helpful for when they end up having to do the commutes. I don't, you know, that seems like that, that would be within the realm of possibility, and with Alpine, that that was useful.
Yeah.
Some of those longer basketball commutes for the meets.
Yeah, I'm sure we could coordinate a bench of a bus on that.
Great questions. Noel?
I've got some thoughts that I'd like to share.
Noel, make sure that you're in the, you're talking directly, because we want to be able to hear.
Right. I've got some thoughts that I'd like to share, and it's a dilemma, but one of the things that I want to make sure we don't do is mortgage our future and lock into a lease that gives us no flexibility until the lease is up. And secondly, I want to make sure that everybody out here and everybody watching is that I'll do everything I can possibly to help, and don't give up. This is a soluble, solv, whatever that word is.
Solvable, yeah.
Solvable opportunity. So let's pursue it, and it may take a little while to make it all come together, but I'm convinced that Northfield can do that.
So Noel, in terms of the, the recommendations before us and those that we would, we would, that they're asking us to comment on, do you have any comments on either of the recommendations, the Kmart space or the Farmington lease?
There's some advantages and disadvantages in both. I mean, Farmington is there, and are apparently very cooperative to help. The, the other space that's available is very expensive over, and it's a two-year lease. Should something come up very, very soon, we're locked into a two-year lease, which is gonna be about approaching a half a million dollars for that period of time. So we've hit.
Val, two-year lease or five-year lease for the Kmart? I thought there, just to clarify, it'd be a five-year lease for the Kmart. That's what's on the table right now.
So, you know, that's, that doesn't give us much flexibility if anything would come up over the next four years. We're locked in, and we'll pay the lease even if we don't use it. And that's a dilemma. I've written probably a couple of hundred leases. I've never written a five-year lease that'll, that doesn't work both ways. And I extend my appreciation to you for the work that you've done. It is a struggle.
Thank you, Noel. Other questions or comments people have about the two, feedback whether they're able to provide, Dr. Hillman and Val, on the two recommendations? No proposals, not recommendations, you have not recommended proposals.
So do you have a task force or scheduled times? You meet with this group and then they're moving on, so is that something that?
So I, let's be clear, we haven't had a task force, as you would think of, as I think of a task force, you would look for a variety of stakeholders within the community representing different components. So, you know, you'd have folks who are looking at, from the competitive perspective, you'd have folks who are looking at it from the parental perspective, the administrative perspective, the taxpayer, and that's what I think of a traditional task force. That's how I, we've not done that as of yet. Right now, the, what is, I have asked Val to take the lead. She's done so very capably. She has been having quite a few strategy sessions over the past year, frankly, you know, with our gymnastics coaches and our activities director and involving Jim Colseth, our director of buildings and grounds, and other members of our, our maintenance team as we've looked at these various options. And so when I think of a traditional task force, you know, frankly, Jeff, we've not had that, as you've got, what we've been doing is working with the paid staff that we have to look at the options before us and say, you know, what are the ones that we can both make work from a perspective of having the space that we need to house a program that, you know, is safe and our girls can be proud of participating in, and also balancing that against making sure that we're able to sustain that cost long-term. And so that's the work that we've been doing so far. And of course, there's, there are, there are lots of other options that have not been presented to you as proposals, because as those groups have looked through them, they're not things that we have felt are, are sustainable. So there's been a number of other different things, you know. We actually did even look at saying, what would it cost to build our own? And we costed that out to a certain extent and did not feel that, given the timeframe that we had and everything, that was something that was probably not something that was within our capacity at this point. And we've really been looking at, are there any creative options that we haven't thought of? And every time we ask that question, we, the wheels turn a little bit. We might get one more lead or one more thought process, but it continues to come back that the specifications of the space are such that it does limit us in terms of the different locations that you can get. And we are blessed, frankly, to have an outstanding facility for 24 years, I believe, and that's just not where we're at right now. So we have to find what is that next option for us as we move ahead. We'll be very clear, we're not in love with either of these options, but they are pieces that can give us some certainty for the short-term and give us some more options to look at, how do we solve it long-term, so we can have a permanent home for this program.
Well, that's good. I think you're doing the work on that in anyway. It's just a matter, it's kind of like you got a lot of the pieces of the puzzle. It's just a matter, can you find, you know, the building with the criteria that you need? And I'm sure there's a lot of conditions. Can you explain a few conditions that you need in a building that is from a, I mean, it can't just be a, could it be a pole barn? I mean, could it be a, I mean, because that's what you had before. Val's our expert on it.
Expert is a loose, loose term there. You do need 19-foot ceilings to be compliant with the state high school league requirement. And so there are very few buildings that we have found that would actually have that ceiling, ceiling height built in already. The square footage that we've looked at is 12,000 to 14,000 square feet is really what would be needed for everything to be laid out with adequate size and safety considerations. That would include space for bleachers for competitions and that sort of thing as well. So those are really the biggest, is the, the ceiling height and just the, the shape and square footage. One of the hurdles of the Kmart facility is the fact that there are poles in the middle of it, and the floor is angled in such a way, and they wrapped the poles to make it work for the season. But obviously, not having poles would be a more flexible option for them. So things like that, just structurally, how is, how is the building constructed in a way to make sure that the equipment fits and that it's safe for the students?
Other questions, comments?
Is there any flexibility on the Kmart lease from five years down by the year to year?
I can ask that question. I know they were fairly firm on the price. They actually suggested 10 years, and I said absolutely not. And so I, I'll ask the question for sure, just to confirm, but they're really looking for a long-term commitment, just because it is a commercial space and they are offering it at a significant discount. But I will ask the question.
Yes, Noel?
For people that probably don't know how much 12,000 to 14,000 square feet is, the space needs to be bigger than a basketball court in length, not necessarily in width, but in length, but with spaces for spectators, so I would probably be approaching that. And a 20-foot, probably a 20-foot ceiling. And most warehouses are 18-foot ceilings. So that's a bit of a dilemma.
All right. I appreciate all the great discussion and questions. Is there other questions, comments?
I think, can I just?
Yes, absolutely.
If there's additional information that you need, you know, as you know, after the work session, we brought back additional information that you thought would be helpful in, in evaluating the, the various options that we have. Is there other information that board members would like us to have for you prior to you making any kind of decision? Or do you feel that you're getting to the point in terms of thinking about the current options that we're evaluating? Is there anything more that you need from us to be able to help lead through the process here?
More options.
Thank you, Noel.
Come on in.
So any other final questions or comments? I do have, I do have a couple of comments. So I appreciate Noel's comments as always, and really getting to the heart of what this really is, which has been a really huge struggle. And I, and I appreciate this discussion we've had tonight, because I think it's really clear how much work has been done behind the scenes to bring forward these, these recommendations or these options, I guess, for us to consider. And I think that, you know, there were several that were all out there and had to be eliminated for a variety of reasons. I think that one point, a couple points, key points in my mind that were made, is really for all intents and purposes, it's May, and we have a team that needs to start in November, which, you know, that timeframe may seem like a long time away, but it really, for all practical purposes, is not. And I, I think that we can agree with Val that, you know, the uncertainty is weighing on lots of, lots of people in, in terms of really needing to make a decision and move forward. I think that Ellen's point around other teams that we have at the district who don't practice within the district, so we have the Alpine ski team that does go on the bus 40 minutes every day there and back, in addition to hauling all of their equipment at the same time. And so there's, there's pros and cons. I know as a parent of an Alpine skier, the 40 minutes on the bus is actually welcome because they can get on the bus after school and they can kind of decompress a little bit, have some food, get off the bus, get ready to practice, get back on the bus, come home. The Wi-Fi is there, so there are kids that do homework. It isn't ideal, but for some, that decompressed time, they find that they make it work and that in some ways it can be a positive. I appreciate everyone realizing there's no ideal, really, situation here, but I think the one that we have before us in terms of the, the recommendations that the administrators have brought forward have been really thoroughly thought out and I think really represent some good solutions for us. The concern I have, of course, around the Kmart, and I appreciate Tom asking for a less lease or a, a shorter lease time, it's, we're still looking at, you know, $178,000 a year to lease, and then we would have capital expenditures to do some work in there that really, if you weren't gonna look long-term, you know, you would, would really have to sort of reevaluate the construction aspects of, of making that facility viable. So in my mind, in terms of what we have to look at, in terms of knowing the effort and all of the exhaustive exercises they did in terms of bringing these two forward, knowing that the Kmart facility represents a substantial amount of money, and that the Farmington lease really, in my mind, represents the best short-term solution. And again, we would love that a long-term solution come forward, but I think at this juncture, our, our best approach as a board is to understand the fiscal responsibility we have, the good stewardship, and the, the need to make a decision to, to make sure that our team knows where they're going and that we're, that to me represents the best, best scenario that we can have at this point. And I think the one thing that makes Farmington very attractive is the flexibility that they will give us with the lease. And so we're looking at, again, it's May, this team will start in November, and that will be here before we know it. So I think that as we all look at this information again, because there was some new information that, that came to light, I think, you know, I just think as a board, in terms of the decisions we always have to make, in terms of what is in the best interest of, of our students and our taxpayers and the, the financial stewardship that we're all committed to. So with that, we will move this to an item for individual action at the next board meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's what our intent is, unless we have something that comes up between that, some additional information that we feel you need to have. Again, we want to be, we want to be quick, but not in a hurry. If that's, because we want to make sure that we have some certainty about what we have an option for next year with some flexibility, you know, but at the same time, there is new information. Our goal would be to approve this at the next meeting. However, if there's new information that comes to light, we do have a little bit of flexibility in that timeframe.
Okay. And we will have that information, obviously, in the, in the board packet for our next meeting, and that you would know at that point what the recommendations are, whether we're going to bring it back for discussion again, or if we'll have it as an item for individual action. So in closing, oh, yeah, Tom.
So going on that, when is the, the latest we could approve this or choose one? If, do we give more opportunities for more things to come if we just wait another month to approve this, or?
I think that that's always a possibility, Val. You've been studying that part, because we are trying to build flexibility into whatever option we choose, should a longer-term solution be considered.
Yep. So the Farmington lease is written such that we can give three months' written notice and be out of the lease, and so.
Or if both parties agree.
Or, yep, or, yep, mutual termination also of the agreement. So again, Lynn Bowman from Farmington has been very cooperative and flexible, and so I don't anticipate that being a significant hurdle if something else were to really come up that would be a great fit for the district.
Jeff?
So what was it last year? They had some problems? What were the problems last year that they had in Farmington?
So they were building a new facility, and they were slated to open in November, October, and they had multiple significant construction delays. And I don't think they, they actually ended up practicing at our Kmart facility because their facility was still not open. I think they moved in the end of February.
Okay. So I guess just to note, as always, board members, if you have questions that come up, please, you know, you know, you can direct them to Dr. Hillman and Val, and we'll work through whatever information we need, you know, moving forward to making a decision.
Thanks for the questions, and thanks for engaging and giving us a little bit more direction as we keep moving this forward. Appreciate the discussion.
Good, excellent. We'll move on to our last, last item for discussion, which is the leasing property purchase agreement. Dr. Hillman?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, Noel. Oh.
Let me take a break.
Oh, absolutely. Can I, I'll call for a motion to recess.
And will we recess?
For like, for, why don't we do 10 minutes?
Right.
So there's a motion on the table to recess for 10 minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Second.
Or second, I'm sorry, second. Second by Ellen. So motion by Noel, second by Ellen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. We are recessed until 9:00 PM. Yes. Okay, we are reconvening at 9:00.
Okay, we are reconvening at 9:00 PM from our 10-minute recess. So last item for discussion is the leasing property purchase agreement. Dr. Hillman.
Yes, and so I'm going to ask Director of Finance from Merzendorf to share the information on the potential leasing and property purchase agreements.
So in your packet, we're two fairly identical draft purchase agreements. The, as we discussed, there are two parcels. The shop property with the actual physical shop is 1.01 acres, and then the adjacent lot is 3.49 acres, and there's, it's just an empty lot at this point. So we are, Jim Colseth, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, and myself are working with Jim Gleason just to kind of fine-tune the details of this. This was drafted actually by our attorney, so feel fairly confident in it. There is one typo where it says charter school. Charter is supposed to be deleted, and so I did verify that with our attorney today, and so we will get that cleaned up. So really, this, most of this is actually just formal language. The process we're working through right now is to get a copy of the title work and have our attorney review that. We have 10 days basically to review it once we've received it and notify the seller if we have any concerns. Obviously, we're not anticipating any concerns because we've been using the property, but we do need to make sure that we follow the protocol on that. The shop property is listed at $590,000, and then the vacant lot is $180,000. So the, the plan is, again, just to do a lease purchase option with the, the shop property. So we'll basically sign the purchase agreement, close on the property, and we'll pay the funds out of the general fund, and then we'll work with others to do a lease purchase finance where we'll get proposals from various banks to do the funding, and then we'll basically just make, pay ourselves back, pay the general fund back, and then make lease payments, and then we're able to use lease levy for that payment for the remaining term, whether we do 10 or 15 years. On the term will be determined when we work with others on that piece of it. But just know that those are the upcoming steps for that piece of it. Jim Gleason did request that we close on the vacant lot after July 1st. Just, that was a request he brought to us, and since he has been a great partner and landlord up to this point, and we have no current plans for the lot, I, I told him that I didn't think that that would be an issue that we could accommodate. I did verify that we can have the purchase agreement signed, so we can have them approved at the next meeting if you're comfortable with that, and we can close at two different times on the properties. There's not any kind of statutory requirement that you have to close within a certain number of days. Let's see. I think those were the biggest changes. We're just kind of, he's reviewing the, the language in this with his real estate agent, just to make sure they're on the same page. We're going to add a little language in there, just a caveat to say that in the month of closing, that the rent would be prorated. So that'll be in addition, but no major, no major changes anticipated from what you're looking at. So that's, that's the process we're looking at. We're hoping to get a finalized copy of the agreement this week, and then we can get that approved at the next meeting, if that's the direction the board chooses to go, and we can move forward from there. I would welcome any questions.
And if I can just add, just the, just so that we're really clear for, you know, people who are watching at home and about what property we're talking about, this is a property that is owned by Jim Gleason. It's on Highway 3 in Dundas, just off of Highway 3. Remind me what the street is, Al. Do you know what the street is?
I should. I think it's.
720 Gleason Road. Yes, of course. There we go. Thank you.
I'm pretty sure, thank you.
But this is a, a space that we have been in and using for quite a, you know, for a long, long time, and we use it to store a lot of things for the district. So when you go into the shop, you will see a variety of things there. It hosts and houses our snow removal equipment, because our district does do its own snow removal. So all that equipment. It houses all of the equipment for lawn and for field maintenance. What you'll see that there is, there's also a spot in there where we actually use the key, keen for the district. So every time we do any keys, you'll see there's a small area and a mezzanine section where all of the keys can be created. It's where the district mail is sorted. So it is really kind of this soup-to-nuts place where there's all sorts of different activities that happen there. And what we like about this property, we've, we've done a test run with it for a while, is that it is, it is reasonably conveniently located, but it is not on one of our other properties, taking up green space or other areas that could be potentially used for either physical activity or instruction and those kinds of things. So we could, you know, the thing is, we're at a point where we could have paid for this building already. As we look at what are the other options that we potentially have for housing all of that kind of equipment, again, we have a good space with a, a building that is workable for us, and so it is time to go ahead and make that purchase, and we have had it. We've had people take a look at the building. There's been an appraisal, all those kinds of things. And what we can tell you is that, you know, we believe that the price is a fair price.
Excellent. Questions or comments? Noel?
Is there any doubt about the ownership of the building? And I'll tell you a story. I, I was talking with a person who said, I signed the lease, and there was a gap of one day, and during that day, the tornado took off, ripped off the house. Is there any issue where it may not be, where the ownership isn't going to be back-to-back for insurance purposes?
That is an excellent question. I don't believe so. I, I trust that our attorney would have drafted something that would have covered that, but I'll verify that for sure, because we obviously haven't signed it, so we'll make sure that that's, that's covered.
And I don't, I don't say it to defer anything, other than the fact that I'd like to have back-to-back.
Yeah, absolutely. No? That makes sense?
Thank you.
Good, good question, Noel. Other questions, comments? Do, oh, I'm sorry, Ellen.
Just in terms of your recent comments, and I, I really appreciate how you've led us through this process. I feel really comfortable with the information that's been provided. Right on in terms of everything that's, it's, it, there hasn't been any sort of concerns or questions. I think all the information has continued to be consistent with what you've provided, and I'm really comfortable with moving forward with what I have, so.
Excellent, excellent. So Noel?
Thought came to mind, is there any asbestos in the building?
Another excellent question. I doubt it. I, I think it was, I have to look at when it was constructed, but I think it was constructed after the time when that would have been kind of the norm.
Yeah.
But I will verify with Jim, both Jim's, Jim Colseth and Jim Gleason, that, that that is the case.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
And it's being inspected as well, right? As part of this, there's an inspection portion of this as well?
There can be.
Okay.
Because we've been occupying it for 12 or 15 years. We were intending to do that, but Jim Colseth didn't have concerns.
Okay.
But I will verify for sure.
Other questions, comments? So does the board feel comfortable if, if the, excellent questions from Noel, if those were addressed and that information will be in the next board packet? Are we feeling comfortable moving forward with the item for act, individual action at our next board meeting? Okay, let's proceed unless there's something that comes back based on the questions or any additional attorney information that comes back. We'll be able to move it at our next board meeting. Okay. Well, so we have successfully worked our way through our items for discussion and report, so we'll now move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a few items, personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve? Motion moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Rob. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on then to our only item for individual action this evening, which is the resolution for termination and non-renewal of probationary licensed staff. Again, there was one staff, person that was added to the list in the table file, so that will be added to this same motion. As an item for individual action, is there a motion to adopt the resolution related to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of the probationary licensed teachers as presented at the close of the current 2018 school year?
So moved.
Moved by Rob. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. Any discussion or questions? You know, this is something we routinely do as part of the, our move through the calendar. No questions or comments? All right. This is a resolution, so it calls for a roll call vote. Anita?
Hardy?
Aye.
Strattmo?
Aye.
Conell?
Aye.
Rania?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, again, that was our only item for individual action, so let's move on for items for individual, items for information. In our packet was the enrollment report. Dr. Hillman.
Yes, so you'll see the April enrollment report, and you'll see as we, as you know, that traditionally what we'll see is a little bit of decline of, you know, throughout the, toward the end of the year, and you'll see that that is the case. And it's, when you look at it a couple of different ways, we're actually up a little bit in terms of, when we look at the grand total, and down a little bit when we exclude the early childhood and part-time independent study, ALC. And of course, when we think about that part-time independent study in ALC, this is the time of the year where, with their various graduation benchmarks, that sometimes students qualify for graduation, so they're done prior to the end of the year through those programs. So you'll see, otherwise, if you look at the totals for each building, you'll see they're very comparable to what they were last month. So again, continuing forward and just basically the same way we have over the last couple of months.
Okay, excellent. Any questions or comments on the enrollment report? Okay. Our next item for information is April is the month of the military child. Dr. Hillman.
Yes, and so included in your packet, we have some information from the local Northfield beyond the Yellow Ribbon, and also I've included in your packet a proclamation in terms of looking at the month of the military child. And if you'll indulge me, I'm going to read this proclamation so that the public has an opportunity to hear it. "Whereas thousands of brave Minnesotans have demonstrated courage and a commitment to freedom by serving in the armed forces of the United States of America, in active duty posts in Afghanistan, Iraq, and around the world, and whereas more than 40% of military personnel have children at home during deployments, and whereas more than 23,000 children in Minnesota have at least one parent currently serving in the active military duty, and whereas when parents serve in the military, their children serve too, and whereas it is fitting that we recognize and honor their sacrifices, celebrate their spirit, and let our men and women in uniform know that while they are taking care of us, we are taking care of their children. And whereas by recognizing the month of the military child, we pay tribute to military children for their commitment, sacrifice, and their unconditional support for our troops." And this is something that was brought forth by Governor Tim Walz. And so one of the pieces is that, as you know, over the past several years, the district has been one of the strategic partners for Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. And Beyond the Yellow Ribbon is a local group of volunteers who come together to try to make sure that we're providing support for veterans if they need something, and to support families who have a deployed family member. So I'll just give you an example. A few years ago, there was a family whose, whose, one of the parents was deployed overseas. The refrigerator conked out, and so they activate the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon network, and with, within a day, they had someone who had donated their new, brand-new refrigerator, someone else who went to pick it up, installed it, took the other one away. If you think about, if I have children at home and I have a spouse or a significant other deployed overseas, there are just some things that you need some assistance with. So we're grateful to the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon group. They have also led on some things like this in terms of the month of the military child. We started this program with them last year in a very cursory way. We're being a little bit more intentional about it this year in terms of we've used our social media channels to be able to promote this. And then I just encourage you, and I encourage everyone in the community, that on April 17th, it's wear purple to support children of our deployed military personnel. And so again, we know that freedom is not free. We know that people are making sacrifices so that we have the opportunity to exercise our democratic rights like we are here this evening at our school board meeting. And we have a number of students within our district who have a parent who is actively deployed or is who are veteran, and we want to make sure that they know that we care for them. We are grateful for their family's sacrifice and that we support them to the best of our ability. So I wanted just to take a little bit of time at the board meeting to share this proclamation that Governor Walz has shared. You also heard some thing, or you saw something in the packet from the local Beyond the Yellow Ribbon group. And so we thank them and Mick Bornek, who is someone who I've worked with on that committee over the years, to really try to make this a focal point for our school district.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Our next item for information is actually an up, just to give an update on school board members and Dr. Hillman's day, C-Day at the Capitol. So as you know, we're a member of CE, Schools for Equity and Education, and myself and Dr. Hillman, along with Board Member Ellen Iverson, Amy Gurwitz, and Noel Strattmo, and we traveled to the Capitol for a really great morning, and we were able to meet with Senator Dreheim, Senator Little, who has that little spot of little area of Dakota County that is within our school district, and Representative Lippert. And while our time with them was very brief, I think it was very productive. They were, I think, really wanting to hear from us and wanting to understand what we thought our challenges were and how they can help school districts. I think that they all support education and understand the, the value that well-educated students mean for our economy and the future economic growth of our state. So I think we felt very welcomed and, and were feeling like we were well-heard. So, you know, I think this session, as in other sessions, and we've, we've highlighted it so many times at meetings, but we really do have a unified message, and that's predictable, stable, and equitable funding for all school districts. So there was, there was that message with a heavy focus on the general education funding formula and special education cross-subsidy. So groups are, are coalescing around that, as we did two years ago in the, in the bionium year, between the School Board Association and school administrators and Schools for Equity and Education and the rural districts, and, and we all have our, our issues, but we, we do have that one as, as very common and unified message, which I think helps legislators to understand that where they are placing the dollars is really something that, that we all support. So really looking at, as we said, the 3 and 3% on the general fund formula, and we, we teed up the idea of tying that increase to inflation. So we hope that was heard. We talked about the, the special education cross-subsidy, obviously, currently in excess of $5 million in Northfield and projected to be 800 million statewide within the next few years. So obviously huge. And then, of course, as a district with low property wealth, we had to talk about equalization. But not only equalization in terms of, of getting it, but also where it comes from. And so we heavy push to make sure that equalization comes out of the tax committee and not education finance, because leveling that playing field for our residents shouldn't have to come out of the classrooms. It should really come out of taxes, which is where it belongs. So we hope that there's the current tax committee people who seem to, to understand that, but we also know six weeks left of the session is a long way to go. So anyway, we felt like we delivered that message, and so that, that was successful. Right as we met, the education targets were coming out. That's the dollars that they earmark for education. So as we know, the governor has earmarked 733 million across the programs he wants to support, including the general fund formula. The House was very surprising, coming in at 900 million, and then the Senate coming in at 206 million. So there's just a little bit of a gap there, and have six weeks to, to see how that will play out. So the House released their omnibus bill on Friday. The Senate was supposed to release theirs today. So the House clearly heard the message. They have got a lot of good things in their education omnibus bill. They've put 3 and 2 on the formula, and they've got cross-subsidy and equalization, and it's all kinds of great stuff. So we don't know yet how the Senate's spending their 206 million. That was supposed to come out today. I tried to find it, but I, I couldn't, so we'll look for that. In addition, and I think we've heard over and over again at these meetings, the importance of some, some local programs we have, and there's funding at the legislature for those, and we're fortunate that both Senator Dreheim and Representative Lippert are sponsoring some important bills for us locally, and we talked about. locally, and we talked about those. So, it's state funding for Northfield Promise, Greenville Park Community School, and a really good Tri-City Bridges to the Future program. So, as, what I can tell is there is dollars that they have put in the omnibus bill for those, that those, those requests have moved forward, not necessarily that they will make it to funnel legislation. But one important note, I think, is that our legislators are on their spring break, so to speak, between April 15th and April 22nd. So, we may see our local legislators around town, and certainly community members will see them, and they always like to interact with constituents and understand, again, there's competing priorities for them, and, and the dollars that we know are limited. So, anytime we can sort of tell them where we think those dollars will best serve our school district and our community, I think that's really important, kind of face-to-face that we can have. So, we really thank Deb Griffiths from CE for setting up those meetings. It's really hard to get time face-to-face time with our legislators, and I think we were all able to communicate with points around that we wanted to make. So, it was really time very well spent, and we really value that time. Because again, it's tough to get meetings, but she was able to line them up for all of us. So, a great use of our time, and, and really, a lot of the heavy lift comes now because the, the bills are out, but there's six weeks left of the session, so we have to continue to weigh in in terms of where, again, we want those dollars to best serve our district and our students. So, that's the brief recap. Is Ellen, or Noel, or Dr. Hulman, anything you want to add?
Good session.
Okay.
Yeah, we really appreciate their time.
Yeah, it was, it was really good. Okay, so our last item for information is a construction update, number five.
Yeah, I've got a presentation. I'm just kidding. 64 slides.
The point was in your table file.
Yes, that's right. Just again, what you'll see how Anita and I are formatting this is that we're trying to keep kind of a running record of by just graying out what we've had in the past, so that hopefully by the final construction update, we'll be able to take this walk down memory lane. But just as we looked at since the last time that we met with our first meeting in March, if you recall, we have had a couple of project oversight committee meetings, actually, in February that we didn't report on the last time, one in March, that actually we came back from the CE Day at the Capitol for, to have that. And again, that project oversight committee is looking, just aligning the work across all the buildings. We had completed the work, the initial work for the Greenville Park core planning team. The Bridgewater core planning team had moved to the user group phase. That user group phase is generally completed at this point. We're still working through a couple of other current district groups, like so, for example, we're now starting to reach out to law enforcement to start looking at some of the pieces to make sure that they have any final suggestions before we get to bid on the Bridgewater project, starting to bring them on the new Greenville Park project as well. We started the Greenville Park user group meetings last week, and want to thank Principal Sam Richardson, who really has been working with Walz to get those scheduled, using a combination of people giving up some of their, you know, some strategically placed time along with some substitutes to be able to get all sorts of feedback. As part of that, we've got some additional user group meetings this week as well. Invitations for the Sibley Project core planning team went out today. Again, that's going to be a group that's going to have about 19 people on it, which, again, that's one of our smaller teams. And so, they will start meeting, the first meeting is planned for April 25th. We had originally looked at April 16th, but we're going to wait until April 25th. We're just trying to be really intentional to give enough time so that each project gets its due course of action, and also frankly, just so we can manage the schedule. And remember, the Bridgewater project was not planned to go out and to bid till next year. We believe we'll start that project and have that project completed by sometime in October, a full year ahead of schedule. So, remember, we're not actually planning to do the Sibley building, Sibley bidding until later this summer and looking through some of those things. So, we're, we're moving very well on our schedule, and then, once we get the Sibley one done, then we're going to actually go to the Greenville Park renovation. Once that one is done, then we'll move on to the final long fellow project. So, that's your construction update for tonight.
Excellent. Questions, comments?
Tom?
So, the new fields at Greenville, when are they going to start on those? Because once they bring in the construction equipment, we want to have those fields ready.
Yeah, so that will be a work in progress, and there will be some time where those fields are not, you know, there will be some overlap. And so, that is a process that one of the things that we're starting to come into right now, Tom, is that those are things that we can work on seeding and do something on those other things, so it doesn't have to be a complete wait till one gets done to move to the other. But one of the things that we're going to be working through is that, in my old analogy, in previous districts, I have suggested we have to put up with the rain to get the rainbow, because while we're being very intentional about making sure that these projects are sequenced in an appropriate order, there are going to be some times where it doesn't quite perfectly fit. So, I will talk with, because really I see that Ellis Field, that field piece will mostly be on our grounds crew. We have to work on that. So, we will put on our list to talk with Jim about, is that the kind of thing we can start looking at this summer? Because again, just what, what Tom is referring to is where the new building is going to go is a grass field that many people, and we actually have used it for some lacrosse practice. We've had many people in the neighborhood who use it. The intent is that we'll move that to, so Noel, help me, which side of the building is that? So, we're going to move over to the west side of the building then to where-
Baseball, where the softball field is now.
Yep, so where the softball field is, the baseball, that was very common for little neighborhood schools like that to have a baseball diamond years ago. Not so the case now. People are using Sackler Park and some other things, so we're going to reclaim that. We're going to be putting grass in there, so we can get, you know, at least one, if not a couple of smaller fields marked on that property. Again, if people want to play baseball, or they want to play, they certainly can do that. It's just that we'll no longer maintain an infield.
Well, it just seems that that's the number one question about the whole project is, are the fields going to be available?
Well, and the pieces that, Tom, I agree with what you're saying, because right now, things are becoming real.
Yeah.
I mean, when you start to see a diagram that has where the cabinetry and where the, where the water fountain and the sink, all of a sudden, you look at it and say, "Oh, this is actually hap-" and actually, I'll tell you, it's pretty exciting.
Yeah.
It isn't without a little bit of stress, but at the same time, we are, our job, especially with the project oversight committee and the board, in my humble opinion, is that we make sure that we keep that broad perspective of making sure that we see all of the projects and how they work together, and as things like this come up, are there things that we do have control over? Frankly, we are not going to have control over every single one of the things that come up. This sounds like one we probably can have some control over, and we can work to address those issues. And I'll talk with Jim Colseth and Tracy Clausen and our team this week about that. Great things.
Good question, Tom. Other questions, comments? Okay. So, our future meetings, I want to point out, it was in the table file. So, our next regular school board meeting is Monday, April 22nd, which is two weeks from today, obviously. What is in your table files, we would like to do a 5:00 P.M. closed negotiation strategy session. I think that we have talked about it. We'd be, typically, we're available at 5:00, and it would be good to maybe come at that with a little fresh perspective rather than coming off of a meeting. So, if people want to get, if board members want to get to their own personal schedules and let Anita know if there's any reason you aren't able to make that, we can adjust. But our, our proposal now is that we would do the April 22nd, meet at 5:00 P.M. for the closed negotiation strategy, and then following that, go have our 7:00 P.M. regular school board meeting, that same, that same Monday. Then, in May, we meet on Monday, May 13th, and then again on Monday, and then, okay, so I'm sorry. Let's talk about May. May, first meeting is May 13th. Second meeting in May is actually on Tuesday, May 28th, because that Monday is Memorial Day. Hard to believe we're already talking about Memorial Day with an eye on snow that might be here on Thursday. Anyway, so, again, May, May 13th, and then Tuesday, May 28th. All of our regular school board meetings are at 7:00 P.M. in the Northfield High School media center. So, with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn, moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Tom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Excellent.
Good job, everyone.